Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Tuesday, September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, school committee meeting here at seven PM at Tingsboro High School. I will officially call this meeting to order and we will start with introductions. Tamile?
Sharon Fairbanks.
Robert Mullin.
Good evening. Julie Quister-Cheese.
Good evening. Mike Moran.
Good evening. Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Tenerella.
Ryan McMahon.
Paul Mitchell.
Amy Pizersky.
Joe Basina, Business Administrator.
Sophia Campbell, Student Representative.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to last stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, I'll seek a motion to approve the September eleventh, two thousand eighteen school committee meeting. Minutes?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Carrie, seven zero zero. Correspondents.
Mr. Chair, this week I did receive documents from MASC and MASSS regarding the joint conference, which comes up November seventh through November tenth. As you know, it's a joint conference between the Superintendent and School Committee Association. It's a great opportunity for school committee members and superintendents to get together on the Cape and really understand what's happening in current education, in Massachusetts education, policy, funding, and different protocols, different things that are going on with education today. So what we'll have to do is we'll have to select a delegate to be a voting member for that conference, and I just want to put it out there, if you can remember, that's interested in going, please send me an email, let me know, and we can work through registration fees and go from there. So on the next agenda, October second, I know Mr. Mullin goes every year, we'll be looking to nominate a delegate to vote at the MASC, MASSS conference.
Yes. And any member of the school committee can attend that conference. If anyone's interested in attending. I know Mr. Mullin goes every year, like Dr. Flanagan said. I went a couple of years ago. Work requirements will restrict me from going this year, but everybody's welcome. Visitors, comments, and questions? See none? Share the success.
Last Thursday, TMS hosted their open house. This weekend, Tingsboro Cross Country held their annual car wash at Tremontes. Mr. Bové, a former TMS STEM teacher, who is now a THS physics teacher, was recognized last Wednesday at a Red Sox game for his work in STEM, and students in TMS installed a colorful work of art on their front staircase.
Nice. If I could jump on the Mr. Bové, approximately thirty of us actually went to the game. It was so much fun. He was so excited and well-deserving recognition. They got to go out on the field before the game. One young lady from the STEM program actually threw out the first pitch, but they were all standing behind her, and they were on the big screen. It was a pretty cool event, so congratulations to Mr. Bové. At this time?
I would like to make a motion and take item nine A out of order.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie, seven zero zero.
So, Mr. Chair, at this time, our middle school administration will join us at the head table here. As you know, we tried to do things a little bit differently this year. Instead of having all the principals come on one night and report out, we thought we'd go a little bit deeper with each school, so the high school one last week played about the opening of the school. Tonight, Mr. Pollitt's here with Mr. Hook and Mr. Evans to talk to you about the opening of the school, as well as new initiatives and things they're excited about and looking forward to this year at TMS. So without further ado, I'll turn it to Mr. Pollitt.
Well, thank you for having us. It was a very busy summer at our school, as we made a number of room changes and staff changes, and I would be remiss if I didn't start by saying that Gary Comtoys and his staff did a remarkable job at getting everything in order and the building looking as good as it possibly could for the start of school, which we were greeted with, not alone, but many other schools went through some very warm weather to start the year. So I want to give a serious shout-out to both my staff and students for truly weathering extreme temperatures. We're looking forward to maybe less humidity and some cool days ahead, but despite that, we were very, very glad to see how successful the start of school was. Those first few days are kind of transitioning in our sixth graders and seventh and eighth graders, making their move to their new level and getting used to their teachers and just the comings and goings, and in this case, getting to know where the new rooms were as they were used to, where teachers had previously been. By the end of that second week, I said to fifth-grade parents, now sixth-grade parents, that their kids would be running the building, and not literally running, but they know their way around the building. They're very comfortable after a few days of just kind of feeling their way out. By the time we came back after the second weekend, they were raring to go, so it was great. Despite all those changes, our model this year has been received very well. We have teachers on one team at each grade level, a four-person team like the traditional model at TMS had been, and we have a two-person team on every grade level, as you all know. And after our open house, the reception of the two-person teams from the parents was very positive. They love the way that these teachers are integrating their curriculums and working together very closely. Four-person teams are new configurations because of moving of staff, and they have been very comfortable with that model, but we've actually seen more integration cross-team and cross-grade. So we see English teachers in seventh grade working together. We see math teachers in eighth grade actually talking and bringing kids together in larger groups, so it's made it a little bit smaller, nicer, warmer feeling, and consistency are key in talking with Dr. Branko over the last couple of years, is that we want kids to have a pretty similar experience with the two different teachers on the grade level, and because of these communications and because of these opportunities, we see that there's been a lot more, there've been more similar routines established in each class. We've also having two new curriculums over the last two years. The science curriculum has been updated last year and now carried into this year, and this year, we're launching a new math program, which has allowed for similar materials and similar outcomes, we're hoping, across the way. So that has been a great start to this year. We were a little concerned at how that would go. I think our two-person teams have really come to all three of us and said, this has been a challenging experience because we're learning a new curriculum in some respects, and how do they blend together? And we've given them additional time during team meetings and during after-school times to coordinate their efforts, and we're putting less pressure on their expectations to let them have more time, expectations professionally, to allow them more time to prepare for what's coming up each day. We have three new staff members this year. Danielle Slattery came over from TES to take the position that Sandy Cassidy held for thirty-plus years. Caroline Lord is a new prayer professional, working with a sixth grader who has made a nice transition to our school, and Pat Keenan is our new night custodian, as Ryan has gone to the elementary to take a leadership role over there. I think the biggest benefit we've seen over the three years has been the change in our schedule to allow more flexibility with our teachers, and it's already paying dividends now. We've started our NWA MAP testing, allows teams to take the testing time and then spread the rest of their academic time equally, or however they want to do it each day. It allows for the learning to actually dictate the schedule, as opposed to the schedule dictating the learning, and I think that's an ideal that a lot of schools are striving for. You have a number of variables which affect your schedule, but what we did is tried to create a routine with our Unified Arts and then allow the remainder of the time in the day around lunch to be left up to the teams and allow them to, if we have a longer science class that we need to hold for two consecutive days, they can schedule that way. If we want to have a very traditional fifty-minute block, they can do that. And I think what it's allowed for is these two-person teams in particular to be much more comfortable and flex their time, and that we've really seen great dividends from that. So one of the aspects of our school that we're also really proud of, that has really taken off, is our co-teaching model, which Josh will talk a little bit about, and then we'll get going around.
Great. Excellent. So this is really the second full year of our co-teaching model, so what that means is that we've embedded at each grade level on each team, there's two teams on each grade level, we've embedded a special education teacher to co-teach some ELA and math classes. We actually are facilitating eighteen co-taught classes. It's actually a pretty large scale to do when we started it last year, but our discussions were, we felt that it was going to be the best for our students because it would afford opportunities to really target specific student learning needs, from students that might need remediation, students that might need extra practice, to students that might need extension past the curriculum, to provide that opportunity infrastructure for the students. So this year, we've really started to move forward and really evolved that, especially with the schedule. All the teachers have common planning time. Some teams have the ability to meet twice during the day to really plan for the unique and diverse learning needs of our students. Just to piggyback on a little bit that Mr. Pollitt said about NWA testing, it also allows the teams to really sit down with a nice analytical lens to really analyze the data to get the special educator's perspective within the co-taught classroom, as well as extend to some of those students that I think want to be pushed a little bit more as well.
So with all of these changes, that's obviously happened with the district, starting a new vision, a new theory of action, you know, our strategy for district improvement, we really thought it was time to also to go back at the middle school and look at our core values. TES does a fabulous job with their stripe sticker, and they have their stickers that they put on. It's a great starting and talking point. Here at the high school, we have the five core values, which have really taken off. At the middle school, the process didn't really take off as well as we would like. So what we did at the last meeting, staff meeting on September twelfth, is we actually brought them all in, very similar to the process that we went through here at the high school when we were doing the accreditation, and started talking about, what should our students who leave TMS really look like? What core values should they have when they graduate from TMS? And we kind of gave it as a blank slate to all the teachers. The teachers came up with a bunch of ideas that they thought and they liked. We kind of did a carousel activity where they went around and could look at different ones and see what other people put, and really start hammering away at them. Why is it good? Why do you like that one? Why don't you like that one? The teachers were very appreciative of it. The last time this process happened at the middle school, it wasn't collaborative. It was kind of a top-down model. This is what we like, and they would put down, they had signs put up in the building, and I purposely covered up one of it, and they couldn't tell me what was really on that. They knew the ideas of them, but couldn't actually tell me the values that go with them. So this process was far more collaborative, and we really wanted to piggyback on this new culture that we're bringing to the middle school, of the teams talking together and really get that collaboration going. So the process went great. All of that work went in, and we brought out a list, we kind of hammered it down to ones that we really like, and we're giving them back to the staff to vote on. But the part that really is, I'm excited about and that we're excited about as a team, is what's next? Because after we pulled these values together, we said, okay, how does this translate to the classroom? Because if it doesn't translate to the classroom, then it's not worth the poster board that we're going to put up in this building. How will you show perseverance in a class? How will a kid be respectful about the environment, or people's property, or self-respect? And really drove into that and took a good half-hour for conversations with teachers about how you're going to show these core values in your classroom, and how they're going to demonstrate these kids have these core values when they leave. And that was really the exciting part of it. We're going to continue that conversation at our next staff meeting, but it's such a positive and, I think, worthwhile aspect that we're really excited about it going forward. Other things that we're kind of looking at, you know, as our other processes going forward, is our instructional practices. What are the teachers doing in the classroom, and what is best for kids? And do they need to be modified, changed, so that we can meet the obvious needs of diverse learners? We're using a lot more data to inform our instruction, again, taking that data and the NWA scores and MCAS scores, but how is that affecting that teacher's practices in the classroom? What are they doing to change to meet those needs of those students? Not just having you take a test, but what can we use that data to actually modify the instruction so it actually increases the learning for all students? And then our big initiative for us is the social-emotional learning for all our students. You know, not all students are coming in at the exact same pace. Some students aren't ready to learn the first five minutes of class, so what are we doing to actually help these kids get ready and change it? And really self-recognize where they're at and how they can move themselves to really prepare themselves. So those are the initiatives, kind of.
So Jim talked a little bit about the culture we're trying to create. We had the opportunity a week ago, yesterday, to bring a gentleman in representing a group called Twenty Twenty Vision Quest. His name is Randy Pearce, and his story is pretty remarkable. He and I had a chance to talk a little bit before, and he focused a great deal on the concept of growth mindset, which you've all heard to some extent. Randy spoke at last year's Scholar Leader Dinner for Massachusetts in, I want to say it was May, and two of our teachers were there, and as he spoke, they emailed me from the meeting or from the dinner and said, we need to get him to our school. Randy Pearce, at twenty-two years old, had just graduated from UNH. He had his degree in engineering and had his first job, and within a two-week period, he lost the sight in both eyes and didn't know what he was going to do with the rest of his life. And he joked, I could be sitting in my brother's basement right now staring, well, not really, looking at gray and wondering what I was going to do with my life. And instead of what he did is how he chose to live his life, he had a rare nerve disorder, which eventually took his ability to walk at one point. He had to reteach himself to walk, and in his early forties, he decided that he was going to climb all four-thousand-foot mountains in the state of New Hampshire, forty-eight of them, and did it and created this, I mean, several videos that were absolutely remarkable. He did them in a three-month period in the wintertime. And one of his final climbs was Cannon Mountain, and talked about how he didn't leave, he had this huge group that supported him. It's remarkable, and I highly recommend you look at the site, Twenty Twenty Vision Quest, but he talked about leaving no one behind, and how everyone helped him get to this point, and how he would include everyone. And I thought, in his, he spoke to all three grades, and then we talked afterwards, debriefed as a staff, and then the message that he gave them is that you have to achieve, you have to conceive what you want to accomplish, you have to believe that, and then you have to achieve that. And he kept giving examples in his life and other people's lives, and to a child, there are comments where this is the best speaker we've had in a very long time. And all the teachers went back and had debriefs of their own, and then they're going to embed a lot of his message in their work as well. We, as only Keith O'Brien could, this man is a tremendous runner, and he has friends who run with him and guide him. Mr. Andre gave him the ride down and has been his marathon buddy, and he's about to run a marathon, but Keith O'Brien decided he would ask him to come to cross-country practice anytime, and we're hoping that it comes true, but we think he'll be with us tomorrow running cross-country, and we're challenging a few staff members to join us as well. But it's just a remarkable feat, and we felt as if it was an important message for our kids to see when they get frustrated and they have a hard time persevering, that when you have such a remarkable model in front of you, that you can pretty much achieve whatever you set your mind to. So with that being said, I think we've covered the pretty wonderful beginning to our school year, and we'll answer any questions you guys would have for us.
Well, first, I'd like to thank all three of you for being here this evening. Thank you for your presentation, and this time, I'll open it up to Board.
So thank you for coming. I appreciate you being here. There's a couple of things I'd like to touch on, is, you know, you talked about what the middle school core values are going to be, and I look at a middle school as, you know, it's the change from being a child to being a young adult. It's that area, that time in these kids' lives, and the expectations of, you know, you said some kids who come in and are not ready to learn. The expectation that they should be ready to learn is something that needs to be pushed by the staff and administration, and get them away from the excuses like you're talking about. It's great that you have somebody that can come in and show these kids that, you know, there's no reason for excuses, and a lot of people that have issues that they'll never have to deal with, and they get along better than some of these other people that whine and complain about everything. So that's my sort of input as far as your core values, is trying to get them to understand that they're not kids anymore, and this is the transition times, because when they get to high school, they've got four years to, you know, decide, you know, what direction their life wants to go, and they've got to be ready for that when they get there.
I think the great thing about middle school is you have an opportunity to try a number of things out in that three years that you may never have had an opportunity to do before, and you may never again, but you get to try these things out, whether it's theater program, or it's the STEM program, or even different challenges in art. And what we try to do is we try to structure it developmentally where kids are at. So the sixth-grade program obviously looks very different than the eighth-grade program, and the fostering of independence, I refer to it as like the grip you put on your child's hand. Early, when they're young, you probably hold on a little tighter, and you start to release them as they become more able, and we look at sixth grade a great deal like that, that at the beginning, there's a lot of hand-holding. And by the end of sixth grade, you hope that that hand has been able to release. Not all children are going to be there. We're still holding some hands even through eighth grade in some respects, but I think that the real central strength of a middle school is the ability to recognize those differences and where kids are at in that continuum, and that they can achieve, and all that we do talk about is your ability to achieve, but recognizing the diverse population of kids that we have, and not, and one size doesn't fit all, and one model doesn't fit for every student, but as much as we can individualize it, we'll try to do that, but the expectation is that they are going to achieve. And I think Jim's point about how the classroom starts is varied because of who your kids are, but there is an expectation, silent or spoken, that once we get through this, we're going, and you're going to be a part of it at your greatest potential. That's our goal. That's where we want to get to.
Yeah, it's increasing the expectations of the kids and understanding that they need to get there. On an administrative point, at the beginning of the year, we went through the student handbooks, and I want to sort of get on you guys to revise yours. It's forty-two pages of stuff that doesn't need to be there, and we need to work to get that toned up to reflect the policies of the school system as a whole and what your practices and procedures are based on those policies. So I'd like to make sure that that happens this year, so.
So the Policy Subcommittee has been discussing all of the handbooks, just so that you know where this is coming from. And so one of the things we've been talking about over time, and Mr. Hook and I have had this conversation, is really taking a look at how policies are linked in each school's handbook, so they're linked very similarly, so there's like an ease of usability, so to speak. And so we're going to try to take a look at that and then make sure that the uniquenesses of each school are then pared down and cleaned up, so that really the community, in-house and external, has a clear understanding. So we'll look at redundancies, language choices, so we're saying the same thing the same way.
That's enough for me. Well, I might chime in a little bit.
Right. Well, thank you for coming. Is there anything, as a Board, we can do to help you guys succeed in your vision? Couple more million on the budget.
Well, we can talk in a month or so, you know, as we start to...
We wouldn't be against a new building.
So what were some of the problems with the heat? How hot did it get in some of the rooms? It approached ninety degrees in several classrooms. There's no way to get a solid breeze through that building the way it's designed, so you can, some rooms would get, because of their proximity to wherever they were getting some air. Other rooms that were sitting in the sun the better part of the day were getting very little air, and the temperature did rise. We left the building open every night we possibly could, and we moved classes. The high school was very supportive and let us interrupt their broom ball games or different things in the gym so we could have meetings. Kids came downstairs in smaller groups into the administrative areas. They used the cafeteria for a while, but after three lunches, even the cafeteria got pretty brutal. The theater seemed to hold some cool air, so that was a space where we would flex groups in and out of. You know, I think it got to the point with some of the students, many of our students, that it was a personal challenge, they were going to survive it. You know, like the first couple of days, there was a lot of, oh, it's so hot, but by the end of, you know, they had just become part of what they expected, and I think we certainly would love a new building as soon as possible, so if that could be on this year's budget, that would be wonderful. But I think that...
We're working on it.
But the flexibility with the high school to allow us to come over with some of our larger groups was really helpful, and we really dodged a bullet in the spring, quite honestly, because we only had three or four days, even with the length of the school year that were very hot. This was pretty abnormal to start school with, you know, four days of ninety or whatever. We may have to get a little bit more creative and get over to the elementary school, where we heard it was rather chilly at times. Those who told us that, we cursed their name. I can't give the staff and the students enough credit for how the year went on. We did not sit in our air-conditioned offices as we put in a lot of time upstairs moving people and just checking in on them, so.
Are there any other concerns with the building as far as safety or any of them?
I wouldn't say safety necessarily. I mean, I think we've maxed it out with our electricity. You know, we've redone a couple of rooms. People would say, well, why don't you bring in window air conditioners? I think we would have probably done something to the town of Tingsboro, had we done something. I mean, it would have had an effect, serious brownout would have occurred. So I think, I mean, I think the building's, Gary does a tremendous job. Ryan Guthrie has stepped right in for George, who did a wonderful job doing what we can with the facility as it is. I mean, it looks as good as it's possibly going to look. Cleanliness, it's pretty remarkable, how much pride Gary takes in it in particular, but, I mean, it's just maxed out. It's maxed out on many levels, and hopefully we can impart that, you know, in our meetings this fall to the state and see what happens from there.
We have a meeting coming up on the third.
October third. MSBA is coming for a senior study site visit, yes. We'll make our pitch again.
Yes, we will.
I'm good. Very thorough presentation. Thank you, John.
And just thank you for all your hard work during the tough start.
And we seem to have a pretty successful open house last week.
It was one challenging parent that we had to work with.
We say the same thing. I didn't want to leave the air conditioning office.
Thank you for being there, too.
Yes. And we will go back to our regular scheduled meeting. Subcommittee update?
None at this time.
No personnel?
No action at this time?
Unfinished business eight B.
Eight B. Mr. Chair, in the drive for everyone's review, a draft of my superintendent goals. I will be reviewing those goals in depth with the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee next week, or next, I'm sorry, October second, before our next meeting, but those are the three preliminary goals, just in general. One, you heard a lot of discussion tonight about NWA and MAP testing. One of my overarching goals is for us as a district to better use data so that we are tailoring our instructional practices to the needs of individual students, and we want to be able to look at data and look at kids by name and have that drive where we're going, not a set curriculum. We want to reach our kids. So one of my goals is focus on instructional practices and using data. Another goal is looking at digital literacy, computer science. There's much discussion at the state level... There's much discussion at the state level that this may become part of the mass core graduation requirement at some point. For a district of our size, seventeen hundred students, to essentially have one STEM teacher at the elementary school and one computer teacher shared between the middle and high school, that could be problematic. So we really need to look at digital literacy and computer science and really do a deep dive on our curriculum, our programming, and understand what best practices are and really morph into that direction. It may involve making some important budget and staffing decisions down the line, but if that's what needs to happen, that's what needs to happen. So that's one of my goals. And the third goal is to continue and finish up the new superintendent induction program. This is my third and final year in that program. Program's been extremely beneficial in terms of helping us create a strategy for district improvement, as well as revise that strategy along the way and create action items that are attainable that allow our vision to really have life in the classroom. So those are the three goals in a nutshell. I put them in there now for the committee to, to look at, to review, to comment, so they can send your comments to the chair and we can discuss those at the October, October 2nd meeting.
Capital asset subcommittee discussion. We, Dr. Flanagan and I have talked about having an alternate for our capital asset subcommittee. Amy and, and Rob are, are voting members. But we'd like to have an actual alternate, just in case somebody can't make it. Capital asset meetings are one of our big budget deals that I think is very important for us. And I know there's things that we're going to want and I just want to make sure that, that we're all well represented.
There are five members on capital asset subcommittee, five voting members, two from the selectmen, two from the school committee and one from the finance committee.
This would be a non-voting member, but they would at least be present in the event that Mr. Moll and Mr. Podolski can't make it. So.
Well, if it's, let me, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, if it's going to be a non-voter member, what's the point of having an alternate then? Because the concern is if we're going, if somebody can't make a meeting, if there's going to be a vote that night, it's still only going to be one person voting.
Yes, but there's another opinion in the room that represents the school.
So why can't the alternate vote?
I don't know if that's.
It would be something we have to, we have to check the language of it, that's all.
Because I think there's another board that they actually did that. They made the alternate a voting member on the nights that a voting member could not be present. And I don't remember what board that is.
Well, I, yeah, I, I mean, obviously I'd like to check that out before we have any action on this.
We can revisit it on October 2nd.
Yeah, Amy and myself, we've had a couple of conversations concerning capital asset. Personally, I think last year went extremely well. I think both of us got our points across in the meetings. I think we had tremendous support throughout the other board's representations. Both board of selectmen and the finance committee were completely on board with what we were looking to do. And I don't see that changing with further conversations that I've had with them over the past couple of months since we were very success, through our very successful town hall meeting and getting those approved. If it's, if it's, if this additional, this alternate can vote, then fine, you know, I'm fine with that. If they can't, you know, I don't really see the point there for just those reasons.
Yeah, let me research that and see, because I, I don't remember which board it is.
So Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I can reach out to Town Ministerial Moro. We'll classification, we'll table this till October 2nd.
There's one more, I mean, these are open meetings. Anybody has a right to come to these meetings that they, you know, that wish. So, you know, if anybody has any further thoughts and wanted to voice their opinions, they could just come to those meetings as well. And I'd be happy to make sure that everyone knows when they are. Okay?
Go revisit the summer, October 2nd.
I do think it's important that we have our two votes present at every meeting.
Absolutely. You know, that, that's the goal, right? And I think there was only, I think there was only one incident last, one meeting that was missed by one of us last year. Okay, so that was, that was never a problem. Okay, the voting, the meeting, the meetings that we had where there was going to be voting, both Amy and I were at every one of those. So we never, there was never an issue with it.
And we, we had a very successful capital asset.
Absolutely.
Deal from, from you guys. So.
Thank you very much.
The buses and everything else we got. So.
It's a vehicle. It's on the bus.
That's available. So, yes.
Multi-function.
Multi-function, scroll through.
We're going to give it its own name once we get it.
NFB.
So I'll do some homework for us, Mr. Chair.
Going back to nine, nine B, distance learning proposal. Dr. Franco?
So. Yes. Already. So we're excited to talk to you a little bit about what's being known as a distance learning program. And so we put a couple of quick slides together that we'll put into your drive so you can take a further look at them. But Dr. Flanagan and I would just kind of like to talk this through with the committee tonight. What we'd like to do is we, we seek, basically seek permission to explore the possibility of implementing this program. And the reason behind it is to proactively respond to the reality of schools being closed due to reasons such as inclement weather. There are a lot of models out there right now across the state, particularly in our region in eastern and central Massachusetts that school districts are playing with and are researching to try to react. We would like to be proactive in this so that we can take a look at maximizing school days in real time and potentially limit the amount of snow days that cause, let me rephrase that, limit the amount of days that it causes to extend the school year. So that's kind of our driving force behind this conversation tonight. Distance learning is a process of providing students with real-time assignments and instruction that can be done remotely from home or other non-school locations. The catch here is during a predetermined period of time. That's different than other models and we'll discuss that in a few minutes. And we all know the reality of this third paragraph here, that we have unexpected school cancellations in New England that constantly cause interruptions to the teaching and learning process and result in us adding school days to the end. And despite the hard work of our talented instructional staff and our students putting their best attention foot forward, the reality is those days at the end don't necessarily replace the timely and relevant learning experience that could have taken place originally on the canceled day. So this is kind of the driver behind us having this conversation.
So I think we'd like to look, we're looking for your permission tonight to explore a conversation with the TTA about this moving forward to see, even see if they'd be receptive to looking at coming back to this committee at some point down the line with a more comprehensive, thorough, vetted proposal. And one of the things that we're being specific, trying to be specifically clear about is we're calling this a distant learning opportunity. This is not a blizzard bag program. A blizzard bag program, as, as Dr. Branko said to me, is reactionary to a cancellation. Distance learning is a targeted, coordinated, thought-out learning experience for students outside of the school. Given our school calendar, we think we have an opportunity to capitalize on that. So.
So Dr. Flanagan had put this together for us last year when we were kind of reacting to the reality of snow days. And so really the, this doesn't seem like it's going to change. We, we tend to have an average of, you know, four to five snow days a year. We're hoping that last year was an anomaly, but this is, this is kind of the driving number that we're looking at. It could be fluctuate between three and five over time. So we have the reality of contractually negotiated full-day PD days here in Tingsborough on the election days. So we believe that this is a great opportunity to maximize those days. And we would like to talk with the teachers about designating one or even both of those days proactively as distance learning days. So what that would mean was teachers would develop and provide curriculum-based opportunities for their students to, to complete remotely over a designated period of time that includes that full day. So that's where we have to be real clear. So what that means is if November 6th is election day, that doesn't mean kids and families are just going to get hit with a one-stop activity or assignment on that day. We'll build a window of ten days or two weeks, wherever we decide with the teachers that that day falls in and that they will put together some thoughtful, real learning experience that are tied authentically to the pace and of the curriculum where we are at that moment in time for students to flexibly do over that period of time.
And that's the proactive component. It's going to tie right into the current curriculum unit and not be reactive to a school cancellation day.
They could be individual or group-specific assignments. They could be project-based learning activities. I would love to see it to disciplinary assignments and projects and opportunity to mix and blend some authentic learning experiences with different, with different content areas together. And the way it would roll out is students who complete their distance learning assignments by that particular due date would have their work graded accordingly, no different than any other school work that was assigned. And the big win here is they would then be marked present for the designated canceled day. So if we've designated this day and then the superintendent calls a snow day on December 5th, for example, December 5th, those children who have completed the work would get credit for attending that day. And as a result of this model, we would have, I'm stealing Dr. Flanagan's language here, one or two days in the bank, so to speak, to point towards canceled days, which would allow us to add less school days onto the end of the year.
So if we were to, again, if we were to pilot, there's no way we're going to be ready for November day. But if we were to pilot on our May election day, that's the first ever distance learning day. This is our current school calendar. Right now, if we were to do a distance learning day on that day, students would get out June 11th because they would have attended school remotely for one day. In addition, we built the calendar for a hundred eighty days. There are a lot of questions about what the school calendar looks like and how we would create it next year. If we were to go one or two days, do you build a one hundred seventy-eight day calendar and put five on at the end or do you build the one eighty? That's all, those are all questions and topics that, that need further discussion, need to be vetted right now. But, you know, there's a potential now where a snow day would still have the kids potentially getting out on the 12th if we were to have a distance learning day.
So I started by talking about the proactive approach here. We, we believe that this allows us to proactively plan for the reality of New England. All of us with kids in the room and the kid, the student in the room, I saw her Sophia, we understand, right, the uncomfortableness and the reality of what the end of the school year looks like. And supplanting those, those days that are missed with the end of the year, hot days in June, when most, most of our curriculum flow is kind of coming to a close, it is difficult. So this would allow us to recover a specific amount of school days missed. And it would also, and this is a big one for me as, as someone looking at teaching and learning. It would allow us to continue to provide students with uninterrupted, relevant and impactful learning experiences. So that work assigned, let's say on the November day or the May day, over that, whatever the window is, five days, 10 days, two weeks, whatever we determine, would be real, uninterrupted, relevant content that's happening at that moment, as opposed to teachers having to create something at the end of the school year that either fits in to whatever we're doing at the end or counts as a review or some kind of less meaningful extension. To me, that's a huge curricular gain and an academic gain. And then we can't really deny the gain that we get by not extending the year as well. And then our next steps, as Dr. Flanagan said, is we really would like to work with the teachers to develop a shared understanding of what the model would look like, including things like timeframe, types of, and length of learning and assignments, expectations related to preparing, supporting, grading these assignments, and then ultimately develop a really solid program overview with an FAQ to provide parents and this committee with a clear understanding of the purpose of the model and how we would roll it out.
I'll just say that, you know, nine days this past year was an anomaly, but I think power outages seem to be more frequent. Ice storms are happening more often. These schools are very warm and, and going to June 26th, I, I think you could feel the climate and culture of all, all the schools. It was long. It was long for staff. It was long for kids. So anything we can do to proactively address that without compromising the education, I don't want it to be a reactive worksheet for kids. Because fundamentally, I'm opposed to that. But if we can thoughtfully plan and make modifications and accommodations to the work and make sure all our kids have a positive experience, I think our calendar does give us an opportunity to capitalize on a distance learning day or two. I'm happy. And again, this is a concept right now, but we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
My first question would be, how does the state handle this? I mean, they're the ones that say it's a hundred eight days and number of hours and all this other stuff.
Right. So it is, it is approved as part of your time on learning. The state has given that control back to the, to the local committees to define, local, to define what your time on learning is, as long as we're within the minutes and day requirement, this does fall into that.
So right now, Mass General law requires nine hundred ninety hours at the high school and middle school level. We're over a thousand hours. So two days is not a problem.
And how do you balance it if some children do the work because it's going to be at home and some children don't do the work?
So a couple, couple of things. And again, I, some of the questions you're going to ask, I think, are going to be vetted out more deeply than the answers we give you tonight. But the short answer to that is a couple of things will happen. The work will be framed in a window again, five, 10, 15 days, however long that window is, and it will be tailored to the needs of each student. So this will give us time to address students with special needs, students who are advanced learners, to differentiate the assignments appropriately, so that it's not just all on the backs of a two, you know, if you did this on a one-day-one-shot, it's a lot of pressure for me as a dad to have to stay home now and, and make sure that, that work gets done a certain way. So we're trying to take that pressure off and build in safety nets and supports on either end for the students. The reality is no different than any other school assignment. If the child turns it in, it will be graded appropriately because it's going to be a real assignment. And, and if they turn it in, they will also get credit for attending on the day that gets canceled. If it doesn't get turned in, there'll be a grade ramification and they'll be marked absent from school on that particular day.
So would this project be for the snow day or is it just to kind of like build up a day in the bank? So it doesn't matter if there's a snow day or not, as long as they do the project, it's like one day.
So historically, right, correct, correct. But what we do know about New England is the chances of us never having a school year with a snow day are probably gone.
And these aren't actually four school days. We're just looking at, trying to recoup two days that we know of, like the two election days.
To put them in the bank.
To just to put them in the back. But this isn't going to be, we have a snowstorm coming Tuesday. Let's put something together.
No, 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 absolutely not.
Which is the blizzard bag concept, right? And that's what the two of us and many educators are really struggling with because that tends to be reactionary and less controllable as far as the quality of the work that goes out. This will allow us to frame it and to have teachers planning together appropriately. The work can be led as opposed to kind of à la carte, throw it together in the reactionary way.
Now, are those two voting days the only two days that, I was trying to think of any other day on our calendar, but those are really.
Those are only two full four days.
It's really interesting to see how this plays out across the different grade levels. Obviously, it's going to look very different, the elementary versus high school.
It absolutely will. We have very few models locally that are doing this, but we do have some.
To that point, this is, we're in close contact with Westford. Westford Public Schools is also taking a distance learning approach, different than a blizzard bag approach. So we're, we're working collaboratively with them or actually we're, we're taking a lot of their stuff because they've already done it.
Yeah, I've had a couple of phone meetings already with their assistant superintendent, Dr. Clear, who's, who's done a lot of work with the, the community in Westford Public Schools on this. And there are some things in their program that we like and there are some places where we need to make sure it fits our community. And, and if I can find other schools, districts doing this well, we're going to continue to research that as well.
And we know that Carlisle is going to also pilot this at some point this year as well, Carlisle Public Schools, you know. I don't know if middle six has blizzard bags and Chelmsford and Borica did adjustments to the schedule last year. I think took a very blizzard bag. So there are different models out there. A great opportunity for us to get in front of a day or two to alleviate what you just heard Mr. Paul talking about on June 25th.
And we're really tonight asking for your permission and approval and support in just moving forward to explore this, to come back to the community with a much more.
With the teachers on board. We obviously need teachers on board.
One thing, oh, go ahead.
I, I was going to say the, the important thing is, you know, if this committee, we decide to move forward with it, I mean, support, I like the idea. And obviously if the teacher, when and if the teacher union is, is on board with it as well. And a lot of things have to be in place. I think it's the, also the communication to parents and the community as to how and what it's used for.
Critical.
Because I, I, I've seen it, having two children in the school system where the school day is, the snow day is disruption, where it's all of a sudden the kids are just vegging, you know, we're going to.
Where it's all of a sudden, the kids just vegging, you know, we're going to boot tube it, you know, whatever on their phone. And it is a disruption because then it's like, okay, you're, you're, you're on a train. You're derailed for a day and you're back on it. And I think that disruption isn't good for the high achievers or even for those students who need the, the extra assistance. It's, it's too disruptive. And the fact that we had nine days last year, that was just crazy.
Plus two election day. It's 11 days.
Yeah, plus two election days, plus then going towards the end of that summer. Or, I'm sorry, the end of June. That's really, really put it in the bag for a lot of kids.
You know, there's a lot of talk in some communities about the cultural uniqueness of snow days in New England and how some families rally around that day, like, oh, that's a mental health day, we're all going to go skiing. You know, not all of us can, can do that, but there, there is a component of that. Kids get to sled on a day where they should be studying. So again, that's why the blizzard bag concept sometimes bumps into, um, not only effective teaching and learning, but the reality of culturally how we look at those days. This takes that off the table. It gives us a window ahead of time. And if that snow day hits, um, this has already been done. This work has already been accounted for. And you can do as you would wish and react to that day appropriately based on your family.
We also, you know, if, if we have a successful model in place, in the event we get another nine-day cancellation year, we could at, in April, say, let's make an adjustment. Here's what we can do, you know, and have a distance learning of a couple Saturdays to pick up those last two days this year. Coming to that Monday and Tuesday was a grind for teachers and students. So, uh, so we're not there yet. We're not even close to that yet. But I think what we'd like to do is be able to go forward and talk to, to teachers about this.
I'm supportive of moving forward, and, but there's a lot of questions that need to be answered.
Yeah.
And I think that it's, it's a different approach. I, I think being consistent is better than the blizzard bag concept of all of a sudden just throwing some work at a kid because, so on. But if it's consistent and, um, you can verify that it's been done, you know, there's a lot of, all of a sudden, did all the teachers give an assignment to the kids and do those things? Those are some of the concerns that I would have, you know, making sure that it's appropriate. You're not, uh, creating a situation where, you know, for an elementary school kid whose, uh, parent is working and for that day, they're going to daycare or something like that. So that kid's not able to do those things.
Right.
All, all those questions have to be vetted out, sort of figured out.
And on the positive side, you know, for the high school, you have the BYOD already. So, you know, that makes it pretty seamless, you know? You can do a lot of things with, you know, a lot of assignments that way.
Could I get a motion to, do we need a motion?
I think just a support. It would be great.
Uh, a motion to support the distance learning program and allow, um, Dr. Flanagan and Dr. Branco to...
Explore?
Explore. Go forward.
Make that motion.
I get a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That Gary 700? Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Overnight field trip request.
Mr. Chair, I, I actually asked Mr. Ogden to stay home tonight with his family because he's going to be here for open house on Thursday night. I said, I'll handle this for him. Give Kids the World. I think it's, to me, it's one of the most fabulous field trips we provide. So we're seeking the committee's support to, again, allow 20 students to go to Give Kids the World. We, you've heard the song and dance. It's, it's a veteran committee. You all know what it does and that the powerful impact it has on our kids, on this school is incredible. And I think it's one of the, again, as I said, one of the best things we do. So looking for your support to approve the overnight field trip. Mr. Ogden and Ms. Gustafson, this year, uh, will be taking 20 students. Cost is $1,350 to go to Give Kids the World, November 4th through November 9th.
What grades is that open to?
Uh, you have to be 16 to travel.
16?
16 or above because they don't let you volunteer in the park unless you're 16.
And what dates?
November 4th through the 9th. So. Your daughter missed it?
She said she wanted to do it next year.
My daughter went on this trip, and she still talks about it today. It's just an incredible experience for this school.
My daughter went on, and we did it as a family, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do it as a family.
So I will seek a motion to approve the Give the Kids the World field trip. Make that motion?
Second? Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Upstate? That Gary 700?
Homeschool applications received.
15.
Oh, I, oh, reaffirming both policies. I'm sorry.
Jeez, feels like we're being bullied.
Tonight, we'll be reaffirming two policies. 5.22, the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan, and the Lunch Prices Policy Number 7.1. And the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan is, um, there's no changes because this is a policy that was, um, put out by the state. And, um, there's no need of changes for it. And the number 7.1 Lunch Prices, the Lunch Prices haven't changed, so the policy is the same. So I'm going to call for a motion, um, to reaffirm these two policies.
Make that motion?
And...
A second?
A second?
Second. Any further discussion?
Any discussion?
These are just policies that we are supposed to approve annually every year.
Yeah.
These are one, eight or 10 annual policies.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Gary 700? Thank you.
Now can we do homeschool?
Yes. Mr. Chair, we received four requests for homeschool application. Chris and Michelle McNally, they have three children, grade 632. Christopher and Heather Black, six kids, grades 10, 8, 6, 4, 1 in kindergarten. Kevin, Kristen, Russell, two children, grades seven and five. And Christopher Briggs and Emma Klassen, one child in grade two. We reviewed the materials. All acceptable.
Excellent. All of them? Fair professional negotiations?
Yes, Mr. Chair, as you know, we just finished our, uh, Unit A bargaining. So now we need to begin Unit D negotiations. It was, uh, efficient, I believe, last time with the approval of the, um, negotiation subcommittee that we approved ground rules prior to, so we could actually hit the ground running at the very first meeting. I put a draft of the ground rules in here. If the committee supports that, we can have you sign off tonight, Mr. Chair. And I can approach the, uh, the union president tomorrow and have her sign off on the ground rules. And then I will solicit dates from the subcommittee, and, uh, we'll go from there.
And the ground rules have not changed.
Have not changed.
So could I get a, uh, motion to authorize the superintendent to set the ground rules with the Unit D collective bargaining with the president of the Tinswell Teachers Association? Make that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Gary 700?
Sarah, Finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, there are nine bill warrants presented to the school committee. In your drive is the list of warrant number, accounts, and amounts for your review. All of the packets have been returned to me approved. For signing of payroll, in your drive is the last two payrolls, the September payrolls, since we last approved payroll. Again, payroll date, warrant number, and accounts and amounts are in the drive for your review. Tonight is the annual school committee affirmation of the expenditures for the previous year. In your drive is the FY '18 budget. And, um, certainly, the school committee's budget is the most volatile in, in the town as we have to react to the needs of the students and the teachers that we have throughout the school year. So the end result is your budget does come down to the actual amount spent, but each line item may go up or down depending upon our needs. So, um, the school committee has always had the right to move monies between their lines, unlike other town departments. So at this time, a motion by the school committee to approve the report as is would be an affirmation of your spending.
Uh, seek a motion to approve the fiscal year '18 spending as noted in that report. Like to make that motion? Second. Any further discussion? Just like to say, I did, I did review it, uh, and I want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Messina for another wonderful year. Second? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? That Gary 700?
Also in your drive tonight is the FY '19 August financial package. That is your budget as well as your list of revolving accounts and the student accounts. All three of those are in your drive. And, uh, September 1st enrollment, I will leave up to you.
Yes. Tansboro Elementary School, we have 811 students. The middle school, 376. High school, 482. Out of District 18 for a total of 1,687. Move on to school committee discussion. Sorry, Mr. Fairbanks?
Masa, thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Uh, as we spoke earlier, uh, this evening concerning the, uh, school committee meetings for the state of Massachusetts, and looking to see if anybody else would like to go. If anybody would like to discuss them after this meeting, I'd be more than happy to stay for a little bit. Just to let you know, it does take place down in Hyannis, Mass, between the dates of November 7th and November 10th. That's a Wednesday to a Saturday. And they do have some really great presentations, some learning opportunities. And I think anybody who decides to go would get quite a bit out of it. Other than that, I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Good evening.
All set. Thank you.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Just one last thing in terms of the solar discussion that we had last week. I did send an email to the school committee Wednesday. After our meeting, I reached out to Alex Keighley of Select just basically sharing the questions that the committee had regarding the information that might be available. He was certainly very excited to share the number of different ways we can access the data and, and do different things with it. Was very eager to come to a school committee meeting. I basically asked him to wait until the project was actually up and running. So that way, he could come in, give us an overview of the project, and, um, just how we can, how we can use the data and display the data, and, um, he was very excited to come back. So I would anticipate seeing him at a future meeting once we're up and running.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'm all set. Thank you.
I'm good.
I like the new format of having the different schools come in on different nights. I think we get a lot deeper with them. It's nice having them and their teams here to speak about their individual contributions, so it's a good format.
Great. We'll keep on that.
Yeah.
So, uh, two things I happen to, um, I was able to go to the Red Sox game to, uh, to celebrate Mr. Bogues' achievement with iRobot. It was a great night, um, and I think he was, uh, he was funny on the field. He was truly like a little kid to be out there on Highway Park, so that was funny to see. So congratulations to him, and congratulations. I learned something this morning, which I did not know. Ms. Fairbanks and I have talked about it. Today is an anniversary for Mr. Messina. Today's Mr. Messina's 18th year in the district, so, uh...
And it was a nice lawn guy, too.
He wouldn't want it any other way.
No, absolutely not, so.
That's all.
And I have nothing at this time, so.
Can motion to adjourn?
Second? Any further discussion?
Aye. No executive second.
No executive session in the student... All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That Gary 700? Thank you, and have a good night.